Frau Präsidentin, Frau Werbeauftragte, meine Damen und Herren! Zeitenwende ist ein großes Wort. Die Bundeswehr braucht eine Zeitenwende. Was die Bundesregierung und insbesondere Verteidigungsminister Pistorius abliefert, ist keine Zeitenwende. Es ist das Drehen an kleinen Frauben. Es ist die altbekannte Augenwischerei aus dem Besteckkasten der Ministerialbürokratie: Taskforces, Quartalsberichte, Non-Papers, Expertenräte. Tauglich allenfalls, um Laien zu beeindrucken. Aber eine Zeitenwende kriegt man damit nicht hin. Die Bundeswehr ist in einem Zustand, der eine politische Kraft erfordert, die die Ampelkoalition nie ...
... has itself previously acknowledged. The fact that a legal question may have a political dimension does not oust the court's jurisdiction. Moreover, while it is well established that the court enjoys a discretionary power not to provide an advisory opinion, it should only so decline for compelling reasons which has never happened before and in Ireland's view should not happen now. Several states have suggested that this request for an advisory opinion is an attempt to resolve a bilateral dispute without the consent of one of the parties to that dispute. We very much regret that Israel has chosen not to engage with the subject matter of the request. In our discussions with the Israeli government, we encouraged it to participate in these oral hearings, so that the court could have the benefit of its perspective. However, in our view, the issue of the occupied Palestinian territory is directly of concern to the United Nations itself and it goes much further than a mere bilateral dispute. As this court noted in its advisory opinion on the interpretation of peace treaties with Bulgaria, Hungary and Romania, even where a request for an advisory opinion relates to a legal question actually pending between states, its opinion is given not to the states but to the organ requesting it, in this case, the General Assembly. It has also been suggested that this court ought not to opine because the questions are one-sided in nature. However, it is well established that the court may interpret or even reformulate a question if it is not adequately formulated or where the question does not reflect the legal questions really in issue. Similarly, where a question is vague or ambiguous, the court may clarify it before providing its opinion. A further argument advanced by some is that the court should narrow the question to a request for advice regarding the role of the General Assembly in promoting a resolution to the conflict within the established negotiating framework. However, the court has previously rejected a similar submission, holding that it is not for the court itself to purport to decide whether or not an advisory opinion is needed by the Assembly for the performance of its functions. The General Assembly has the right to decide for itself on the usefulness of an opinion in the light of its own needs. We do not agree therefore that a ruling by this court would undermine the established negotiating framework. On the contrary, this court's authoritative clarification of the important legal issues raised would provide the essential foundation upon which to build a lasting, comprehensive and just resolution of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Mr. President, Israel has been in occupation of the Palestinian territory since 1967. Accordingly, in that territory, it is obliged to respect applicable international humanitarian law, including the law of military occupation and international human rights law. The defining feature of Israel's occupation of Palestinian territory in the West Bank, including East Jerusalem, has been continuous settlement activity. In our written statement, we have drawn on the authoritative reports of the Secretary-General and the High Commissioner for Human Rights to set out the numerous different ways in which this has occurred. But in summary, we say the following: Israel has used different means to take and exercise control for non-military purposes over as much land in the OPT as possible. Once in control, Israel has undertaken permanent construction on this land, in particular developing or encouraging the development of permanent settlements onto which it has incentivized large numbers of its own citizens to transfer. Through its actions, Israel has fundamentally altered the demographics of the West Bank. As of 2022, almost 700,000 Israeli citizens were living in settlements in the West Bank, including in East Jerusalem. Israel has extended the application of domestic Israeli law to those living in settlements, blurring the distinction between Israel and the OPT. And Israel has transferred the exercise of authority in the OPT in certain areas from military command to civilian control, integrating administration of the territory into that of Israel. By transferring parts of its own civilian population into the OPT, Israel has violated Article 49/6 of the Fourth Geneva Convention. It has continued to do this, notwithstanding the court's confirmation of its unlawfulness in the wall case and despite being exhorted by both the Security Council and the General Assembly to cease this practice. Israel has also continued to unlawfully destroy and appropriate property throughout the OPT as part of its policy of encouraging and facilitating the expansion of settlements. This destruction and appropriation of property cannot reasonably be justified by military necessity. Rather, it is clear that it has been done to facilitate and indeed encourage the expansion of settlements. Such destruction and appropriation of property clearly breaches the Fourth Geneva Convention and the laws and customs of war codified by the 1907 Hague Regulations. There has also been a recent marked increase in reports of Palestinian civilians being subjected to sustained, serious violence by Israeli settlers with little or no protection from the Israeli security forces, contrary to international humanitarian law. The security forces have been reported and recorded, not only watching this violence without intervening, but in some instances even participating in it themselves. This has escalated since the 7th of October and the Secretary-General has warned that tensions have now reached boiling point. The Secretary-General and High Commissioner have expressed concern that this violence, particularly when considered in light of the appropriation and destruction of Palestinian property, has compelled Palestinians to leave their homes, their farms and their grazing grounds. The Secretary-General has noticed that the coercive environment created by Israel could amount to forcible transfer, a grave breach of the Fourth Geneva Convention, which may amount to a war crime. Let me now turn to the question of annexation. The evident permanence of the settlements can only be explained, in Ireland's assessment, by Israel's intention of annexing the land upon which they are built. In our view, the development and expansion of settlements clearly demonstrate that Israel is and has been engaged in a process of annexation of that land for decades. The absence of any declaration of annexation or formal de jure act of incorporation over most of the West Bank is immaterial. Despite references in the current Israeli government's coalition agreements, which the Secretary-General describes as promoting a policy of application of sovereignty over the West Bank, previous history suggests that no announcement or formal act of incorporation may occur in the near future. Nevertheless, in Ireland's view, Israel is already engaged in the process of annexing Palestinian territory. It is doing so de facto through its policy of encouraging demographic change in that territory by population transfer and by the continuous development and maintenance of permanent settlements and infrastructure. Ireland is concerned that it may also be doing so de jure by increasingly extending the application of domestic Israeli law and civilian administration to the settlements in the OPT, thereby integrating them into its own territory and erasing the differences in law between Israel and the settlements. But whether de facto, de jure or both, this process of annexation is in clear breach of the prohibition in international law against the acquisition of territory by threat or use of force, a fundamental principle of international law. To assert that this is not the case simply because Israel has not formally declared annexation would render the prohibition devoid of all meaning. That would permit states to acquire territory by force without legal consequence simply by declining to adopt a formal act of annexation or incorporation. International humanitarian law does not classify a military occupation as either lawful or unlawful per se. Rather, it recognizes that military occupation may occur during the course of an armed conflict and it sets down rules to regulate the conduct of the occupying power, in particular its armed forces. Military occupation is necessarily temporary insofar as international law prohibits the acquisition of territory by force. Occupation does not confer sovereignty. Rather, it is a temporary exception to sovereignty and accordingly it cannot be of indefinite duration. Prolonged occupation over an extended period of time therefore unavoidably raises legal questions, in particular whether it constitutes a disguised form of annexation and/or a determined effort to deny the people of an occupied territory the exercise of their right to self-determination. In either case, the legality of the occupying power's presence in the territory inevitably arises. While it is of course possible that a military occupation affected by force may be undertaken in exercise of the right in international law to the use of force in self-defense, any such occupation may involve no more and may endure no longer than is necessary and proportionate to the armed attack to which it is a response. In the case of the OPT, Israel's military occupation commenced in 1967 and has continued now uninterrupted for some 57 years. It has also entailed, as I have said, extensive and continuous, permanent and deliberate settlement building. Neither the duration of the occupation nor the scale and extent of settlement activity is, in Ireland's view, justified or permitted by the law regulating the use of force in self-defense. Indeed, if the security of one people can only be achieved by the occupation over so many decades of the territory of another people, one has to wonder whether there can be any military solution to the problem that it purports to address. In our view, the only effective solution to the problem can be a political one. Mr. President, I wish to turn now to the question of self-determination. As submitted in our written statement, Ireland has concluded that by its prolonged occupation of Palestinian lands and continuous settlement activity on those lands, Israel has prevented the exercise by the Palestinian people of their right to self-determination. The principle of self-determination is a fundamental principle of international law enshrined in the Charter of the United Nations and the 21966 International Covenants on civil and political rights and on economic, social and cultural rights. The content of that principle was elaborated in the 1970 Declaration on Friendly Relations, adopted by consensus at the General Assembly. That declaration makes clear that every state has the duty to promote through joint and separate action realization of the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples, bearing in mind that subjection of peoples to alien subjugation, domination and exploitation constitutes a violation of that principle as well as a denial of fundamental human rights and is contrary to the Charter. The declaration solemnly proclaims that every state has the duty to refrain from any forcible action which deprives peoples in the elaboration of the present principle of their right to self-determination and freedom and independence. In the wall case, the court found that the construction of the wall and its associated regime severely impeded the exercise by the Palestinian people of their right to self-determination. It therefore breached Israel's obligation to respect that right. In Ireland's view, the combination of Israel's prolonged occupation of the OPT and its escalating settlement activity has done so on a far greater scale. That escalating activity has increasingly fragmented Palestinian presence upon and restricted Palestinian use of the land and the natural resources of the Palestinian people. It threatens the viability of a future Palestinian state. The nature, scale and duration of settlement activity is such that its purpose can only be to permanently obstruct the exercise of the Palestinian people's right to self-determination. Both the prohibition of acquisition of territory by threat or use of force and the principle of self-determination are fundamental principles of international law, as are the basic rules of international humanitarian law. It is widely recognized that these fundamental principles have the character of peremptory norms of general international law or use codes from which derogation is never permitted or, as the court described them in its advisory opinion on the threat or use of nuclear weapons, intransgressable principles of international customary law. In turn, peremptory norms of general international law give right to obligations owed to the international community as a whole, obligations erga omnes, in relation to which all states have a legal interest, a conclusion also recently reached by the International Law Commission. Ireland has, with regret, concluded that by its prolonged occupation of Palestinian territory and the settlement activities it has conducted there for more than half a century, Israel has committed serious breaches of a number of peremptory norms of general international law and the corresponding erga omnes obligations to which they give rise, namely the basic rules of international humanitarian law, the right to self-determination of the Palestinian people and the prohibition of acquisition of territory by force. Under the customary international law of state responsibility, where a state breaches an international obligation, it commits an internationally wrongful act. Unless its wrongfulness is otherwise precluded, that act entails the international responsibility of the state concerned and it involves legal consequences. Where the act amounts to a serious breach of both a peremptory norm and a corresponding obligation erga omnes, this court has concluded that it involves legal consequences for all states, namely first, the obligation not to recognize the illegal situation resulting from the serious breach; second, the obligation not to render aid or assistance in maintaining the situation created by the serious breach; third, the obligation to cooperate to bring the serious breach to an end, or as the court put it, in the specific circumstances of the wall case, to see to it that any impediment resulting from the construction of the wall to the exercise by the Palestinian people of their right to self-determination is brought to an end. In the wall case, the court found that Israel was obliged to end the breaches of its legal obligations, including those under international humanitarian law and its duty to respect the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and to make reparation for the damage caused by those breaches. In the present case, the law of state responsibility likewise obliges Israel to bring to an end the serious breaches that I have outlined to the court, including by the reversing of its settlement activity and the making of reparation for the damage arising by way of restitution and compensation as appropriate. For all states, as members of the international community as a whole, to which the relevant obligations erga omnes are owed, the legal consequences of these serious breaches are, in Ireland's view, straightforward. All states are obliged to cooperate to bring these breaches to an end through lawful means, not to recognize as lawful the situation created by them and not to render aid or assistance in maintaining that situation. In particular, states are obliged to cooperate to bring to an end Israel's serious breach of its obligation to respect the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination or, as the court found in the wall case, to see to it that any impediment to the exercise of that right is brought to an end. This includes cooperation by states through the United Nations and, as appropriate, other international organizations, including the European Union. As regards the obligation not to recognize as lawful the situation created by these serious breaches, the court has provided an example of how this may be achieved in its advisory opinion on the legal consequences for states of the continued presence of South Africa in Namibia. There, the court found that the duty of non-recognition obliged states inter alia to abstain from entering into economic and other forms of relationship or dealings with South Africa, which may entrench its authority over this territory of Namibia. This was also the approach taken by the EU in the case of the annexation by the Russian Federation of Crimea in 2014, when it implemented a broad range of diplomatic, economic and other measures intended to preclude any implied recognition of the annexation. Those measures included a ban on imports of goods originating in the annexed territory and a prohibition against investing in it. In the present case, we say that states are obliged not to render aid or assistance in maintaining the situation created by Israel's breach of its obligation to respect the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. The General Assembly and Security Council have in the past called upon all states to refrain from rendering any assistance to the maintenance of situations of denial of self-determination. In Ireland's view, these obligations require all states as well as international organizations with external trade competence, in the case of Ireland, the European Union, to review their trading relationships with the settlements in the OPT. It requires them to take steps to prevent trade that assists in the maintenance of the situation created by the settlement activity or that implicitly recognizes or serves to entrench or legitimize Israel's settlement or annexation of that territory. Mr. President, members of the court, Ireland remains committed to the realization of the two-state solution endorsed by the Security Council: a safe and secure Israel and an independent, democratic, contiguous, viable and sovereign Palestinian state, living side by side in peace, within secure and recognized borders based on those of 1967, with Jerusalem as the capital of both states. This is the established framework within which it was agreed that the solution would be found, which is why recent statements by Israel's Prime Minister in which he openly rejected the two-state solution have caused such widespread international dismay. The solution must be built on a foundation of respect for international law but especially respect for the right to self-determination. In the circumstances, Ireland encourages this court to provide its authoritative clarification of these essential legal issues to the General Assembly as requested. May please the court.
I thank the delegation of Ireland for its presentation. I invite the next participating delegation, Japan, to address the court and I call upon Mr. Tomohiro Mikanagi to take the floor.
Mr. President, members of the court, it is an honor to appear before you on behalf of the government of Japan. Before addressing legal questions put to the court by the General Assembly, please allow me to briefly reiterate Japan's position on the Middle East peace process, which is stated in our written statement. Japan firmly believes that the two-state solution, where Israel and future independent Palestinian states live side by side in peace and dignity, remains the only viable path for both peoples. Japan emphasizes that the conflict between the Israeli and Palestinian sides should be resolved not through any violent acts or unilateral action but through negotiations and efforts to build mutual trust among the parties concerned while respecting international law. Now, in the following oral submissions, Japan wishes to focus exclusively on the issues relating to the acquisition of territory by force insofar as they are relevant to the questions put to the court by the General Assembly. Japan considers that the prohibition of acquisition of territory by force is an essential element of the rule of law among nations to which Japan is profoundly attached and of particular importance to the peace and stability in the region and international community. Japan believes that this prohibition provides an important safeguard for the international community against the return of rule by force. UN General Assembly Resolution 2625, which is commonly called Friendly Relations Declaration, states that, I quote, "No territory acquisition resulting from the threat of use of force shall be recognized as legal end of court." The court clarified in the wall advisory opinion that the illegality of the acquisition of territory by force is a corollary of the prohibition of use of force incorporated in the UN Charter. In the same vein, on 18 April 2023, G740 ministers under Japanese presidency reaffirmed this prohibition. The relevant part ... The relevant paragraph of the communique stated, I quote, "The prohibition on the acquisition of territory resulting from the threat or use of force reaffirmed in the Friendly Relations Declaration of 1970 should be observed in good faith", end of quote. Our statement today consists of three parts. First, I will address the issue of which territory the prohibition of acquisition of territory by force applies to. In the second part, Professor Dapo Akande will speak about what constitutes acquisition by force. In the third part, Professor Akande will examine the relationship between this prohibition and the right to self-defence. Mr President, let me begin with the first point that Japan wishes to make. The prohibition of territorial acquisition by force does not apply only to territory of states within settled or internationally recognised borders. Even in the cases of territory where internationally recognised borders do not exist, that prohibition extends to territory that is under the peaceful administration and could also apply to use of force across international lines of demarcation. The paragraph of the Friendly Relations Declaration relating to the principle of non-acquisition of territory by force states that, I quote, "The territory of a state shall not be the object of acquisition by another state", end of quote. It is not surprising to find the focus on attempts by states to acquire territory of another state. As an example, in October 2022, the UN General Assembly condemned attempted illegal annexation of four regions of Ukraine. In that situation, the prohibition of acquisition of territory by force clearly applies to those territories as they are within internationally recognised borders of Ukraine. However, Friendly Relations Declaration seems to go further than acknowledging the prohibition of acquisition of territory within the internationally recognised border of states by force. In the same paragraph, it proclaims that, I quote, "No territorial acquisition resulting from the threat or use of force shall be recognised as legal", end of quote, without reference to the territory of a state. Japan takes the position that where sovereignty over a territory is not internationally recognised, but where the territory is under peaceful administration by a state that has not itself occupied the territory by force, the prohibition of acquisition of territory by force applies also. This principle follows from the reasoning adopted in the decision of the Editorial Ethiopia Claims Commission. As this court has recognised in the wall advisory opinion, the prohibition of territorial acquisition of territory by force follows from the prohibition of force. Therefore, the scope of the prohibition should be determined with reference to the interpretation of Article 2, Paragraph 4 of the UN Charter. Editorial Ethiopia Claims Commission found that it totally violated Article 2, Paragraph 4 of the UN Charter by attacking and occupying in 1998 the town of Badme, which the commission found was under peaceful administration by Ethiopia at the time. In this regard, the G740 ministers' communique in April 2023 also stated, I quote, "We strongly oppose any unilateral attempt to change the peacefully established status of territories by force or coercion anywhere in the world", end of the quote. Furthermore, Friendly Relations Declaration states that, I quote, "Every state likewise has a duty to refrain from the threat or use of force to violate international lines of demarcation, such as amidst these lines established by Article 1.2, an international agreement to which it is a party or which it is otherwise bound to respect", end of quote. This declaration indicates that the prohibition of acquisition of territory by force could also apply to a territory where internationally recognised borders do not exist, but where parties are bound to respect certain international lines of demarcation. Article 2, Paragraph 4 of the UN Charter itself refers to the purposes of the United Nations, and Japan takes the position that Article 1, Paragraph 1 of the UN Charter must constitute an important context and object and purpose for the interpretation of Article 2, Paragraph 4. The Security Council has primary responsibility for the maintenance of international peace and security, and its view should be given significant weight in determining whether the prohibition of acquisition of territory by force applies to a territory. With regard to the occupied Palestinian Territory, OPT, preamble of Paragraph 2 of the Security Council Resolution 242 emphasises the inadmissibility of acquisition of territory by war. It also reaffirmed that the fulfilment of Charter principles requires the establishment of a just and lasting peace in the Middle East, which should include the application of principles, including, I quote, "with the roar of Israeli armed forces from territories occupied in the recent conflict", end of quote. Japan is of the view that due constellations should be given to the relevant resolutions of Security Council when examining the question of whether the prohibition of acquisition of territory by force applies to a certain territory. Mr President, Madam Vice President, Members of the Court, I thank you for your kind attention. I now like to give the floor to Professor Akande.
I thank Mr Tomohiro Mikanagi. I now give the floor to Professor Dapo Akande. Professor, you have the floor.
Mr President, Members of the Court, it is an honour to appear before you and to do so on behalf of Japan. The court has heard oral pleadings on a range of legal issues arising from Israel's actions in the occupied Palestinian territory. Japan focuses on a specific issue, the scope of the application of the principle of non-acquisition of territory by force. As Mr Mikanagi has just set out, there are three points that are important with regard to the application of the principle. He has set out Japan's position on the first issue, namely the issue of which territory the prohibition of acquisition by force applies to. I will deal with two other issues relating to the principle. The second issue relates to what constitutes acquisition by force for the purposes of this principle. And the third relates to the relationship between the principle and the right to self-defence enshrined in Article 51 of the UN Charter. Let me begin with the question of what constitutes acquisition by force. Mr President, the acquisition of territory by force consists of two elements, namely: one, the establishment of control over the territory through forcible measures; and, two, the intention to appropriate that territory permanently. By acquisition or indeed annexation of territory by force, we mean a situation where a state attempts to acquire territorial title on the basis of forcible acts and where the state does not otherwise have valid title to that territory. The clearest case of annexation is an attempt to annex occupied territory de yure. In such a circumstance, the occupying state formally declares its sovereignty over the annexed territory. However, in the wall advisory opinion, this court indicated that annexation could also take place de facto, where the actions of a state lead to what the court called a fait accompli. That is, a situation on the ground which becomes permanent and which others are compelled to accept. A state seeking to avoid the denunciation of the international community may be incentivised to refrain from formally declaring the annexation of territory. Without clearly expressing its intention to annex the territory, it may seek to gain permanent control over a territory it occupies by engaging in military operations and taking a series of measures that make it materially impossible for other claimants to restore the status quo ante without risking death, physical injury or damage to property. In other words, the occupying state may create what you called a fait accompli through these measures. The effect of the prohibition of acquisition of territory by force would be seriously undermined if states were allowed to circumvent the prohibition by simply obfuscating their true intentions to annex a territory and coercing other claimants to accept its permanent control over the territory through measures that create a fait accompli. It is therefore important to clarify in what circumstances such measures would constitute de facto annexation and amount to an unlawful attempt to acquire territory by force. In the wall advisory opinion, the court considered that Israel's construction of a wall in the occupied Palestinian territory, as well as the creation of an administrative regime facilitating the establishment of settlements of Israeli citizens in areas lying between the Green Line and the wall, are the types of actions which would be tantamount to de facto annexation if it created a fait accompli that had effectively become permanent. Japan considers that certain acts which have continuous coercive effect in imposing control over territory may create a fait accompli and are likely to indicate intention to maintain permanent control over the territory. The following acts by occupying states may have such continuous coercive effects. First, large-scale alteration of the demographic composition of the territory, backed by military and other physical power, including through expropriation of land and eviction of the population. Second, the construction and continued maintenance by an occupying power of a network of physical infrastructure, particularly where these represent such significant financial investment that they may be deemed to be intended to persist over a significant period of time. This may include, for example, roads, communication systems, healthcare facilities, or large-scale military or law enforcement facilities. Third, the continuous forcible seizure and exploitation of the natural resources, including water, by an occupying power. These acts do not necessarily cause death, injury or destruction, but when they are implemented cumulatively in scale and sustained for a long period, they would have continuous, even irreversible effect on the territory. In such a case, they may be evidence that the occupying state's intention is to permanently establish sovereignty over the relevant area, even if it is doing so incrementally. If such acts are accompanied by statements of state officials affirming the irreversibility of measures or even asserting the intent to establish sovereignty over the occupied territories, the measures I have just mentioned are even more likely to indicate intention to acquire territory and thus amount to a prohibited attempt to acquire territory by Mr President, Members of the Court, having outlined Japan's views on what constitutes the acquisition of territory by force, permit me now to turn to the relationship between the principle of non-acquisition of territory by force and state's inherent right to self-defence contained in Article 51 of the UN Charter. The key question here is whether a state that does not otherwise have valid title to territory can acquire title through a use of force because the state claims to be acting in self-defence. Japan rejects this argument. Two alternative but interlinked arguments support this position. The first is that the principle prohibiting acquisition of territory by force precludes any acquisition of territorial title through force, regardless of whether that force is unlawful or permitted as an exercise of self-defence. Alternatively, and in any event, uses of force resulting in the annexation of territory will never be lawful as exercises of self-defence, since permanent annexation can never be a proportionate response to an armed attack. I begin by outlining the first argument. Japan submits that the principle prohibiting forcible acquisition of territory is properly understood as providing that the use of force is never a valid basis for acquiring title, even if the initial use of force by the state could have been lawful. This blanket prohibition is a necessary consequence of the complete abolition of the right of territorial conquest in the context of the UN Charter. In the wall advisory opinion, the court described the principle on the illegality of territorial acquisition resulting from the use of force as the corollary of the prohibition against the use of force itself. It is also connected to other fundamental principles of international law, in particular the right to self-determination of peoples as set out in the Friendly Relations Declaration and recognised by this court. It accordingly reflects a fundamental shift in international law in the 20th century, particularly after the entry into force of the UN Charter, which sought to minimise unilateral recourse to force in international relations. The prohibition on the use of force and the prohibition on acquiring territory by force form part of a coherent scheme with the right to self-defence. The right to self-defence provides for states to have recourse to force in order to defend their people and to preserve territory they already have. It does not allow a right to use force to gain additional territorial title. I would also like to highlight that a finding by the court that conquest could confer tight slope on a state where force was used in self-defence would in practice be liable to widespread abuse. The proper scope of self-defence in international law is controversial. States frequently make contested claims that some use of force or another is lawful as an exercise of self-defence. States seeking to acquire territory by force could accordingly seek to exploit this ambiguity. This would threaten to undermine the principle and alongside it, the prohibition on the use of force. Japan's view on the proper scope of the principle is supported by the General Assembly's Friendly Relations Declaration, which states, and I quote again, because you've heard it many times, "The territory of a state shall not be the object of acquisition by another state resulting from the threat or use of force. No territorial acquisition resulting from the threat or use of force shall be recognised as legal." This part of the declaration contains no exception for force used in self-defence and does not limit the principle prohibiting territorial acquisition by force to unlawful uses of force. By contrast, in the sentence immediately prior to the one that I have just quoted, the declaration prohibits, and I quote, "military occupation resulting from the use of force in contravention of the provisions of the Charter", indicating that where the use of force is not prohibited by the Charter, military occupation may be lawful. This conclusion, the conclusion that the declaration endorses a blanket prohibition on acquisition of territory by force... of territory by force, is not affected by the declaration’s subsequent reaffirmation that it, quote, “shall not be construed as affecting provisions of the Charter.” The right of self-defense regulates the permissibility of uses of force in response to an armed attack, rather than dealing with the question of whether states can, through such use of force, acquire title to territory. The Friendly Relations Declaration accordingly clarifies that the answer to the latter question is no, without purporting to affect the scope of self-defense as a justification for the use of force. Mr. President, members of the court, let me turn to the alternative point with regard to the relationship between the prohibition of territorial acquisition by force and the right of self-defense, and this is my final point. Annexation of territory can never meet the narrowly drawn requirements of the right of self-defense. As the court has repeatedly pointed out, any purported exercise of the right to self-defense must be necessary and proportionate. Self-defense by definition can only justify the taking of temporary measures in order to achieve its aims. The aim of self-defense is limited to defending the attacked state and its people. Thus, even when a state has suffered an armed attack, it can never be proportionate to permanently deprive a people of its territory. In this regard, it is worth recalling that the acquisition of territory by force has been rejected in the context of states claiming to act in self-defense. The Security Council’s response to Iraq’s invasion and purported annexation of Kuwait in 1991 is worth noting. While demanding that Iraq, and I quote, “rescind immediately its actions,” end quote, the Security Council, in its Resolution 686, simultaneously affirmed, and I quote again, “the commitment of all member states to the independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Iraq and Kuwait,” end quote. It’s thus clear that the territory of Iraq had not become liable to annexation, even if states were to act in defense of Kuwait. Another relevant example is, of course, Security Council Resolution 242, which emphasized, quote, “the inadmissibility of the acquisition of territory by war,” end quote, without drawing any distinction between lawful and unlawful uses of force. Mr. President, members of the court, I close my submissions by once again expressing Japan’s position that the principle of non-acquisition of territory by force is an important norm which reinforces the Yuzkogun’s prohibition of aggression and is central to the maintenance of the rule of law among nations. This concludes the oral pleadings of Japan, and I thank you for your attention.
I thank the delegation of Japan for its presentation. I invite the next participating delegation, Jordan, to make its oral statement before the court and call His Excellency Ayman Safadi to the podium.
Mr. President, members of the court, on behalf of the Hashemite Kingdom of Jordan, I stand before you today as the evilness of the Israeli occupation of Palestine is being displayed in the bloodiest and most inhumane way. The Israeli aggression on Gaza, which your esteemed court has indicated warrants examination of plausible genocide, rages on. It is chattering thousands of lives. It is destroying a community of 2.3 million Palestinians who have already been suffering the oppression of occupation. Half a million Palestinians in Gaza are at Integrated Food Security Phase Classification Level 5, facing starvation. This number is four times that in the whole world. In Gaza, Palestinians are dying by Israel’s war. They are also dying from hunger and lack of medication as Israel prevents the delivery of food and medicine in violation of international humanitarian law and in defiance of the provisional measures you have ordered. This aggression has to end and end immediately. Those responsible for it must face justice. No country must be allowed to be above the law. Israel is acting and has been allowed to act in complete disregard of international law. That cannot continue. The occupation is unlawful. It is inhumane. It must end. Yet Israel has been systematically consolidating the occupation. It is blatantly denying Palestinians’ right to self-determination. Its illegally unilateral measures are creating new facts on the ground that are killing all prospects for peace. Settlements, illegal under international law, are growing in numbers and are spreading farther in occupied Palestinian land. The number of settlers has grown from 280,000 in 1993, when the Oslo Accords were signed, to over 700,000 today, nearly a 150% increase. Settler terrorism is a growing evil. Its victims are innocent Palestinians, their homes, and their livelihoods. As the occupying power, Israel has a legal obligation to protect civilians, to preserve cultural and historical heritage, and to refrain from forcing demographic changes. It is constantly and intentionally violating this obligation. Israel is forcing demographic changes in the occupied Palestinian territory, destroying cultural and historical Palestinian heritage, confiscating and annexing Palestinian land, driving Palestinians out of their homes, their farms, their villages, and their cities. It is illegally detaining thousands of children, men and women, and subjecting them to physical and mental torture, humiliation, and abuse. Israel is violating the right of Muslims and Christians to freedom of worship. The Israeli government is severely restricting Muslims’ right to pray at Al-Aqsa Mosque and is taking no real action to protect Christian priests from humiliation and abuse by Israeli extremists. Throughout decades of occupation, Israel has been working on changing the Arab, Muslim, and Christian identity of the holy sites in occupied Jerusalem. Mr. President, members of the court, peace is the right of all peoples of the region, but there can be no peace until occupation ends. There can be no peace until the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination is realized by the establishment and global recognition of an independent, sovereign Palestinian state with East Jerusalem as its capital on its, on June 4, 1967 lines, that can live side by side Israel in peace and security. The Hashemite Kingdom of Jordan has been relentlessly working for peace. We have suffered the consequences of conflict. We know the value of peace to us, to the region, and to the world, and we know what it takes to achieve peace: the end of occupation and justice, freedom, and statehood for the Palestinians. The two-state solution must be implemented, and the Palestinian state must be recognized and accepted as a full member of the United Nations. And for the sake of peace and justice, Jordan will not relent in its effort to defend Muslim and Christian holy sites in occupied Jerusalem and to preserve their identity as we shoulder our responsibilities under the historical Hashemite custodianship of the holy sites and the special role the kingdom has towards them. Mr. President, members of the court, Palestinians are being killed in the hundreds every day in Gaza and in the West Bank because Israel is not being held accountable for its war crimes and violation of international law. Children are undergoing surgery without anesthesia. Six-year-old Hand was left in the car for days next to the decaying bodies of her relatives whom Israel has killed. When medics finally arrived to rescue her, the Israeli occupation army killed them and killed her. This brutality that tortured and killed Hand is a constant reality of life under the Israeli occupation. No more rule that this brutality can be, no more. Help deliver justice. Rule that the Israeli occupation, the source of all evil, must end. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the court, and with your permission, I now yield to Dr. Ahmad Ziyadat, Jordan’s Foreign Minister.
Thank His Excellency Ayman Safadi. I now give the floor to His Excellency Ahmad Ziyadat. Your Excellency, you have the floor.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. Mr. President, members of the court, it’s an honor to appear before you on behalf of the Hashemite Kingdom of Jordan. There are three sections to my address. First, I will identify and overview Jordan and the Hashemite family’s special role and interest in the Christian and Muslim holy site in Jerusalem for more than 100 years. Second, I will share merely fraction of the more than 3,000 pages of evidence placed before the court on Israeli violations. Third, I will briefly identify consequences of the Israeli violations. Jordan’s written submission and evidence that have been placed before the court on these matters are adopted here. Mr. President, members of the court, Jordan and the Hashemite royal family have a special role as the custodians of the Muslim and the Christian holy sites in Jerusalem. This special role is of paramount importance to the whole world because it is what keeps the peace and preserves the historic status quo at Jerusalem holy sites. Jerusalem is holy to Muslims, Christians, and Jews, who together make over 55% of world population, and it must be a city of peace. Preserving the historic status quo is the key to that peace and to countering the global religious tensions. In performance of this role, Jordan administers the affairs of the Muslim holy sites in Jerusalem, including their maintenance and restorations. Jordan also takes all measures within its power to protect both the Muslim and the Christian holy sites. This special role is historically and internationally recognized, including by the U.S., the EU, Russia, the UK, the Vatican, the Islamic State, and Israel itself. I will briefly highlight its recognition by some of the most directly concerned states and bodies. The final declaration of the Joint Arab Islamic Summit held this year states, I quote, “The blessed Al-Aqsa Mosque with its entire area of 1,44,000 square meters is an exclusive place of worship for Muslims, and it is under the management of the Jordanian Jerusalem Awaqah within the framework of the historical Hashemite custodianship of the Islamic and the Christian holy sites.” Article 2.1 of the Jordan-Palestine Agreement of 2013 states, I quote, “His Majesty King Abdullah II, as the custodian of the Jerusalem holy sites, exerts all possible efforts to preserve the Jerusalem holy sites and to represent the interests of the holy sites in international forums and competent international organizations through visible legal means.” Israel itself recognized Jordan’s special role in the Treaty of Peace between Jordan and Israel of 1994. Article 9.2 of the treaty provides, “In this regard, Israel respects the present role of the Hashemite Kingdom of Jordan in the Muslim holy shrines in Jerusalem.” In 1924, the heads of churches in Jerusalem pledged allegiance to Sharif Hussein, reaffirming the Hashemite historic role in safeguarding and protecting Jerusalem holy places. The Hashemite kings of Jordan have performed that role ever since, and this allegiance In 2013, His Holiness Pope Francis wrote to King Abdullah II to acknowledge His Majesty’s custodianship. His Holiness stated, I quote, “I am deeply conscious of His Majesty’s internationally recognized role as custodian of the holy places of Jerusalem. The care of the holy places of Jerusalem has always been the highest priority of the Hashemite royal family.” Turning to violations, Mr. Presidents, members of the court, I will share a few examples of Israeli violations in the holy sites since its occupation of East Jerusalem in June In June 1967, within days of its occupation, Israel demolished the historic Maghribi quarter consisting of 153 houses and expelled its residents in order to enlarge the space in front of the Al-Purag Western Wall for Jewish prayers. Further, the Maghribi Gate pathway, an ancient earthen ramp leading to Al-Aqsa Mosque, was demolished in 2004 and replaced by a wooden ramp in 25,000 fight. A serious and more serious violation that has been going on for decades is the extensive and systematic digging and tannelling works around and underneath Al-Aqsa Mosque, which threatens its structural integrity. On the 10th of September 2023, a UNESCO decision criticized Israel for failure to cease these activities and described them as persistent and illegal under international law. In April 2020, during the holy month of Ramadan, the Israeli forces raided Al-Aqsa Mosque during dawn prayers and attacked Palestinian worshippers with rubber bullets, stun grenades, and tear gas, causing more than 100 injuries to more than 100 people and made more 400 arrests. In the same month, the ancient Kipri Mosque was subject to a similar attack, and significant damage was caused to historic glass windows, the main bar, and the carpet. On December 13, 2021, and on March 31, 2023, the patriarchs and the heads of churches of Jerusalem issued a statement expressing their concern that Christians and their holy sites have become the target of frequent and sustained attacks by Jewish radical groups with the aim of diminishing Christian presence. Mr. President, members of the court, Israeli violations in the Muslims and the Christian holy sites violate the rules of international law, including Articles 27, 53 of the Fortiniva Convention, as we have stated in depth in our written statement. Furthermore, Israeli violations of the historic status quo and the Muslim-Christian holy sites in Jerusalem threaten their integrity. They inflame global religious tension and create confrontations along religious lines. and create confrontations along religious lines. Mr. President, members of the court, thank you for your attention, and I now request that you invite Sir Michael Wood to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Excellency Ahmad Ziyadat. I now give the floor to Sir Michael Wood. Sir, you have the floor.
Mr. President, members of the court, it’s a great honor to appear before you and to do so on behalf of the Hashemite Kingdom of Jordan. Mr. President, Jordan fully maintains all that it said in its written statement and comments, including the conclusions. And I respectfully refer the court to those pleadings for details of our position. In the time available, and given the hour, I shall be very brief in addressing six points. First, a small number of states have suggested that, giving its opinion, the court should take care not to undermine the negotiating framework. Yet both in its 2004 opinion and in Kosovo, the court rejected in no uncertain terms the argument that an advisory opinion could have a detrimental effect on negotiations. Your case law confirms that it is not for the court to substitute its own views for those of the General Assembly on whether an advisory opinion may have such an impact. There is moreover no basis for making such an assessment in the present case. On the contrary, as the court itself said in 2004, “Any negotiated solution must be achieved,” and I quote, “on the basis of international law.” My second point concerns the right to self-determination. This right is well established in customary international law and is a norm of Yuskogin’s, from which there can be no derogation. It goes hand in hand with the obligation to respect the territorial integrity of the self-determination unit as well as the right to permanent sovereignty over natural resources. The competent organs of the United Nations have affirmed this right repeatedly over the years, demanding the establishment of a Palestinian state and the realization of the two-state solution. Regrettably, Israel’s occupation has now lasted for well over half a century. During this period, Israel has intentionally breached fundamental principles of the law of occupation. The raison d’etre of these breaches is to deny the right to self-determination of the Palestinian people. The occupied Palestinian territory has been progressively fragmented. Its demographic composition has been and continues to be altered. Settlements and outposts expand rapidly, while the Palestinian people’s access to natural resources is denied and water resources are depleted. All this, Mr. President, members of the court, severely violates the Palestinian people’s right to self-determination, including their right to an independent state on the four June 1967 lines with East Jerusalem as its capital. The only way, Mr. President, for the right to self-determination to be exercised is for the occupation to come to an end. Turning to my third point, Israel’s policies and practices also violate the law of occupation, which applies throughout the occupied Palestinian territory. Israel has engaged in a policy of progressively establishing settlements and so-called outposts. Israel’s 2018 Basic Law declares, and I quote, “The state views the development of Jewish settlement as a national value and shall act to encourage and promote its establishment and consolidation.” As others have said, 2023 was a record year for settlement expansion. And just recently, in late January, senior Israeli officials caused for settlement of Gaza and for the expanding settlement in the West Bank. Israel’s settlements have created a patchwork of territorial units throughout the West Bank. They seek to create facts on the ground, and they undermine the establishment of a sovereign, independent, contiguous, and viable Palestinian state. As many others have said, they are often accompanied by brutal settler violence, tolerated or even supported by the Israeli authorities. One effect is to instill a sense of terror and fear in Palestinians, leading to displacement from their own land. This brings me to the fourth point. Israel’s policies and practices, when considered in their entirety, leave no doubt as to Israel’s intention to annex the occupied Palestinian territory. The facts speak for themselves: Israel’s 1980 Basic Law, which purported to annex Jerusalem de jure; the continued construction of the wall in the West Bank despite the court’s 2004 opinion; the scale, infrastructure, and location of Israeli settlements; the expansion of Israel’s direct civilian legal authority across the West Bank; and the continued displacement of Palestinians and the difficulties they face to return to their homes. If there were any doubt, the map shown by the Prime Minister of Israel before the General Assembly last September, which you’ve seen earlier this week, and his rejection of the two-state solution confirm Israel’s intention to annex. The annexation of any part of the occupied Palestinian territory is a serious breach of the prohibition of the acquisition of territory by force, a peremptory norm of general international law. Mr. President, my fifth point is that Israel’s discriminatory laws and practices severely affect the lives of Palestinians and demonstrate a total disregard for the occupying power’s duty to protect the rights and well-being of the Palestinian people. Specifically, the policy of discrimination constitutes a serious violation of treaty obligations and of customary international law tantamount to apartheid. The CERD Committee, the Human Rights Committee, and the Committee on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights have each urged Israel to amend the 2018 Basic Law so as to eliminate its discriminatory effects and to ensure equal treatment of all persons within the territory and subject to its jurisdiction within its territory and subject to its jurisdiction. This has not been done. Discriminatory expropriation laws have been supplemented by a vast catalogue of military orders that have little or nothing to do with security or public order. Instead, they permit discriminatory treatment in practically every aspect of daily life, a discriminatory planning regime in which permits are routinely denied to Palestinians, the discriminatory practice of demolitions, and the use of zoning to designate military areas, or so-called nature reserves, access to which is either denied to Palestinians or subject to Israeli permission. All of this is backed up by increasingly frequent interventions by Israeli armed forces to suppress protests, often with lethal fire, by the apparent impunity of those who engage in violence against Palestinians, by the use of excessive force, by attacks on health services, and by the ever-increasing arbitrary detention and ill-treatment of Palestinians, including children. Further, as explained in our written pleadings, Israel has engaged in acts that constitute crimes against humanity and has failed to prevent and punish such crimes. Mr. President, members of the court, I now turn to question B and to my sixth and final point. What the General Assembly asks you to determine is whether the occupation as such is unlawful. Three essential principles should guide the court in responding to question B. These principles are fundamental to the law of occupation, and they reflect Yuskogin’s norms. First, occupation is by its very nature temporary. It must not become permanent or indefinite. Second, the occupying power cannot acquire sovereignty over the occupied territory, whether by annexation or in any other way. Third, the occupying power has the duty to respect the right to self-determination of the people of the occupied territory as well as all their human rights. Israel’s occupation contravenes each of these fundamental principles. Israel’s policy of settlements, including the transfer of settlers, the confiscation of land, and the forcible displacement of Palestinian communities evidences Israel’s intention to occupy permanently and to annex territory that belongs to the Palestinian people. Israel’s serious breaches of the right to self-determination, the principle of non-acquisition of territory by force, and the prohibition of discrimination, all Yuskogin’s norms, leave no doubt that the occupation as a whole is unlawful. The occupation is being carried out for purposes contrary to international law. Mr. President, I now turn to the legal consequences arising from the unlawful occupation of the occupied Palestinian territory. A principal consequence is that Israel must end its occupation of the whole of the occupied Palestinian territory, that is, the West Bank, including East Jerusalem and Gaza. This must be done, as we said in our written pleadings, as a matter of urgency and as rapidly as possible. Another legal consequence is that all states are obliged not to recognize the unlawful situation created by Israel’s policies and practices and not to render any assistance that may serve to further those policies and practices. The content of these obligations was set out by Palestine on Monday in some detail. States must moreover cooperate with the competent organs of the United Nations to bring the unlawful occupation to an end. A further obligation binds states to investigate, prosecute, and punish any individual subject to their jurisdiction for grave breaches of the Geneva Conventions and crimes against humanity. The United Nations, and especially the General Assembly and the Security Council, must take measures to end the illegal occupation, taking due account of the advisory opinion to be given. Before concluding, Mr. President, I must emphasize, in the light of what some others have said, that until Israel withdraws from the occupied Palestinian territory, it remains obliged to respect in full international humanitarian law and international human rights law. Israel’s obligations under these bodies of law continue to apply even though the occupation as such is unlawful. Mr. President, members of the court, that concludes Jordan’s submissions, and we thank you for your attention.
I thank the delegation of Jordan for its presentation, which brings to a close this morning’s hearing. The court will meet again this afternoon at 3 p.m. to hear Kuwait, Lebanon, Libya, Luxembourg, Malaysia, and Mauritius. The sitting is adjourned.